All right, here we go. Here we go now. City Council's study, special study session is May 21st, 2024, and the time is 3:47 PM. Can I have a roll call?
Counselor Basman's.
President.
Mayor Buell.
Here.
Counselor Woodruff.
Here.
Mayor Prasham Yasi.
Here.
Counselor Youssef.
Here, and nice to see you all virtually. I miss you guys.
We miss you too. Hopefully you're back soon.
Hopefully.
Okay, we're item number one, discussion items. 1.1, 2005 sales tax, sales tax reauthorization discussion, information only.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I had called or asked for this at the last council meeting to have a study session for us to begin the conversations on the 2005 sales tax reauthorization. Elliot will be giving a presentation informational only. There isn't any action or direction that is expected today. Obviously, that wouldn't be in a study session anyways, but wanted to get that process going, provide the information that we have as of today to what we're working on. And then also have Jason Simmons, our financial advisor, and then Dalton Kelly, who's our bond counsel, to give a little bit of information on everything that we're working for, working on. And obviously, we'll be coming back to council as we get more into it in the month of June. So with that, I will pass it on to Elliot for a presentation.
Jose, did you want me to?
Sure.
Yeah. As the practice has become with study sessions, we're not taking any formal action. This study session, I just want to give that warning again that when it gets to be times where you may want to ask questions, I'd ask that you use some restraint. These tax renewal processes get very complicated legally because we don't want to put ourselves in a position of taking a position on anything before we put it out to the public officially. Questions you might ask may tip off your position. So I would ask that you just treat today as truly just a learning session. Listen to what the experts are saying about what we can and can't do. Don't ask any question that maybe interpreters committing you to a position because then going forward, anything you would do subsequent to that could be considered a use of public resources to promote one side or the other of the tax proposition. So we kind of designed today to be learning and learning only. And if you have questions, just kind of think twice before you ask them because it's problematic. If you do something that's really off the rails, I'll stop you and advise you. But again, this is one of a series of meetings and no official action happens until there's something for you actually to vote on, and that is clearly not today.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
Mark. Sure.
If, if we're not asking questions, at what point would we discuss what we as council consider? Or at least discuss the approaches that are possible in the sales tax reauthorization? Or are we waiting for staff to present an update and then for staff to prevent, present and ready to vote upon resolution or ballot language?
Yeah, so I think you would want to wait to ask questions until there's actually something formally up for you to consider to vote. And that would be the time you would discuss making changes or making suggestions about different language. This is just kind of laying out the options for you guys. And again, there's going to be another study session, I think in June.
So you're doing regular, we're deciding which session.
Study session or regular session, we haven't decided which one that is, but there will be more information as we get more in details into possible funding scenarios.
Right. And I think some of what you'll learn today is that you do have, if you do have individual questions, those can be answered individually by some of the tax attorneys or me or Jose. We just don't want questions out there in public that would give your position on something out.
Well, the position would be only when you have something setting almost concrete that we vote upon. And it's, it's almost unfortunate that as a council, you cannot provide direction to staff. What as a council, you see as, as a council being discussed before staff works through all the details and come up with ballot language. So to me, that seems almost, and basically the city, city staff comes up with the, with the solution and we basically have a chance at the end of the whole process to say yes or no and raise questions. So that, is there no way to have something where we can discuss that? I thought that was the whole point of a study session.
No, it's the point of the study session is for you to be informed of what your options will be. The, the opportunity, and I would just disagree that it boils down to a yes or no. I mean, you have to rely on your staff to develop with their expertise, what your options are. And if you disagree with those options, or if you want to tweak those options, you have multiple opportunities to do that when it becomes in the form of an ordinance or it becomes in the form of ballot language. All I'm trying to caution against today is doing that prematurely, which puts you then in a position to where you're using your positions as a city council to advocate for either side of a proposal before it's made. And that's in conflict with law.
No, I appreciate that clarification. I, well, it sounds like we are presented with options and then we cannot say much basically. And then at the end, we will see something as a final option to vote upon.
A final, a final modifiable option. I think that's what you're kind of leaving out is that you do have the opportunity as a counselor to reject what's being proposed and provide other options for your other councils to consider. Nothing's final, so it goes to a vote.
Well, and I would just like to remind Counselor Basman's that we've had the strategic planning meeting that we had, and then over, or almost a year ago, we had the meeting, it's when the other counselors were on, where we sat up and we put in priorities and we discussed because it was me, you and Melissa that wanted to maintain parks and rec funding and really push that. And it was Kim and Barbara who were kind of pushing for transit and stormwater, I think, something to that effect. And so we've had discussions about the reoff for up almost a year ago. I don't remember when that, that was at the library where we were at. And so I feel like our vision as a council has been communicated to staff a few times. And this is where they're coming back to us saying, okay, the vision has kind of been there. Here's our shot at it. And then we can make more council decisions as we come to voting in a month. Is that correct?
Yeah. Yeah, and I want to keep it simple. Just don't use your position as a counselor to advocate for either side of a potential tax proposition. That's the prohibition. And the time for that would be when you're modifying the language, but then once that language is agreed on by the council, again, cannot use your position as a counselor to advocate for either side. That's a clear violation of your duties as a counselor and the law.
Okay. Could I have one question? Okay, so at what point will the general public be able to give input to this also?
At the time that the ballot language is being considered by the council. So there will be a meeting where you guys will vote on what the ballot language is going to be, and that would be the time to take public input.
Absolutely. I think as you see where the presentation goes through, we're, we're still not even at a point where we have an option for you to consider. We're still following the direction from the retreat. This is kind of our part of keeping the council as well as the public informed of kind of where we are, how we're getting to where we're going and keeping that side going through. So there's not really even, I think, anything that could be saying like, here's what staff's recommendation is. We're still working on it. We just got construction estimates Friday afternoon after work. So we haven't really had a chance to really dig into that too much. But this was the intention was to start talking about the reauthorization. Let's start talking about what we have now and let you know that staff's still working on it and plans to come back in June with more information as we have it.
And then just one final thing, every jurisdiction I've ever worked for, you have specialized attorneys that work on these type of tax propositions. So I very quickly get out of my expertise in this area and you're going to hear from one of the attorneys who's be there today. So we're prepping you guys as best we can. My caution again is just don't advocate for a position at this point in the process.
Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Elliot Fitz, Budget Manager with the City of Durango, part of the finance team with Devin Schmidt. Online, we do have Dalton Kelly and Jason Simmons, who will talk about the ballot language and in the financial advising that we've received so far. Again, this is a work in progress and it is informational only today. So we're just saying where we are and where we intend to go and how we're going to get there. So some of the discussion that we just had actually was a great lead in to this first slide. So we are operating off of council direction from the March 21st, 2023 retreat. And in that retreat, several options were presented and as Mayor Buell pointed out, we did do some prioritization there. And we are include, based on that direction, we are acting on option A, including renewal of the quarter cent oh five sales tax for funding for post and a quarter cent for facilities. Next, just wanted to go through some of the comparable cities. The tax rates, sales tax rates that we have. You can see that Durango pretty close to a lot of the different comparable communities that we found in our research, even on the lower end of the comparable communities. And you can see that a lot of that, a lot of the funding sources are very different. Durango is probably closest to Glenwood Springs in the number of sales tax with special revenues that they have. And our closest communities, Montrose and Cortez do have a little bit higher sales tax than us. Next, wanted to talk about parks, open space and trails. Again, reauthorization for the quarter cent for parks, just as it has been since 2005, when this tax was originally approved by the voters. Funding for some of the anticipated projects include Durango Mesa Park and some of the current CIP projects that we have that we intend to continue, including land acquisition, open space maintenance and fire mitigation, support for community funds, including Durango Trails, Parks, Trails and Rec improvements. Funding for annual maintenance is a big one that gets funded out of this fund every year. And with all of this, we're anticipating about 1.9 million for capital projects annually going forward. Would like to highlight that Durango Mesa Park is a large increase in the park and open space field that we have. So that we are still working through, just as we're working through a lot with this measure, exactly what the funding there is, but that is a new need of the community and need of funding. So we look forward to continuing to make presentations and flushing out those plans a little bit more with you. Next, wanted to go through some of the community impact that the fund has had since it had been authorized. So some of the ones to highlight, some of the projects to highlight from the post side of the tax is open space acquisition. We've spent more than $10 million acquiring open space since the, since the beginning of the tax. We've also had Oxbow Park River Access, Durango Park Development and Smart 160 Trail, which are all planned to continue and increase. And as long as the tax does get reauthorized, we hope to be able to continue this great impact to the community that we have. In total, for post projects, again, parks, open space and trails, we have spent $39 million since 2005 on completed project. Those projects do continue today. The tax is still active, so you will even see some appropriation requests tonight in our regular council meeting for amendments to that fund. So that will continue to go up as we continue. In addition, the other quarter cent was used for the financing of the library and Florida Road debt service. So in total, we have spent $69 million, again, with great impact to the community for, for the intended use of this fund. Next, we wanted to talk about the Police Department and City Hall project. So it is a vision that the city preserves the historic high school for nine R and move in there and the big picture high school building for a new police department, city hall and city function, city administration building. And we will get into the details on that just a little bit more here. So looking at some of the timelines of how that property was identified and eventually became part of the city of Durango. Starting with today, actually, so we are here to discuss the reauthorization of the tax. But it was originally identified as a potential option for City Hall back in 1994. And obviously, there has been numerous twists and turns to get to this point to today and numerous points of both public input, council input, including the including the council session that we had last year, all the way through the acquisition of that property and now the potential renovation. So getting into a little bit more of the nitty, nitty details, nitty gritty details, excuse me. Wanted to start with what is a municipal bond as one of the potential uses for the fund as had been, as had been done previously. So local governments do have it available to them by vote of the people to get a loan to make investments in public projects. And we are considering it for, again, the City Hall Police Department renovation. And as Jose said earlier, Friday afternoon, we did receive our initial cost estimate of $83 million. Working with the internally and with the designer, we were able to get that estimate down to about 72 million. Mostly, we're looking, we were looking at the contingency that was included in that estimate. It was about 25% of the project, so we were able to work with them to get it down to more of an industry standard level. And additionally, we were looking at the work associated with the alley and where the other possible sources of funding are there. And the 2019 sales tax is another potential source for the renovation and work to be done in that, in that realm. So we were able to reduce the, almost immediately reduce the project estimate to 72 million without doing any sort of value engineering or looking at what services we need to cut out from the estimate. In addition, we are running a scenario with the sale of PD and City Hall. And we are running a conservative estimate of grants. Again, it is a historic building and we believe that there potentially could be room for grants to help support this fund, to help, help support this project and help support the public use of a historic building. So with all that considered, the amount to be funded is $61 million. Looking at a quarter cent from the 2005 cash flow forecast, we are projecting on average $2,951,000 in sales tax. And that is at the start of the tax, we do, when, when we do forecasting, we do anticipate it to increase a little bit, but to be conservative with our estimate, we are keeping that as a, at a flat rate for right now. And working with our financial advisors, Jason, who will be on here in just, just a little bit to give a little bit more detail, we are estimating an interest rate 4.75%, making the total annual payment 3,900, 900,000, 3,900,203 dollars. And you can see that there, right now, there is a difference between what the quarter cent cash flow forecast is and what that annual payment is of $948,000. And that is one of the pieces that we're still working on. Again, we just got the estimate Friday afternoon. So we got together yesterday and continued working on it today to see where we can do it, but we do feel that we are in a place where we can move forward with working on this. It's not, it's not completely out of the realm of possibility. Again, this is a point in time, we're still working on it and we will come back to you in June with updates on the project. Next, we just wanted to look at the construction environment today. So as you all know, we have had major capital projects before. One being the rec center. Rough estimate, rough and very conservative estimate at 575 per square foot. For the rec center to rebuild that today, we're estimating it to be about $41 million. The original cost of it was 14 million. So again, just want to highlight the rising construction costs and the fact that things are not getting cheaper. And same story with the library. It was built in 2007 with an original cost of 12,700,000. And again, with a rough conservative estimate of $600 per square foot, we're estimating it would cost between 25 and 26 million to rebuild that today. And additionally, we did look at construction, new builds, construction projects for other municipalities, other comparable municipalities, and looking at the cost per square foot. So as you can see, even though we are renovating a historic building and it being a historic building does increase the cost of, of it a little bit, we're at approximately 50% of the cost of a new build for comparable cities. So we are still looking to make sure that we get the best value possible for the entire sale, for the entire tax dollar. But we feel pretty confident that the figures presented are not out of the realm of possibility and not unreasonable estimates from our, our partner. Specifically highlighting, if we look at the Montrose Sheriff's Office and the Montrose Public Safety Complex, we can see that their cost per square foot for their projects rose from $432 per square foot to 718 in just three years. So construction costs are rising. We are working with some partners to make sure that we get the best deal for the, for the public tax dollar that we can. Now I would like to hand the presentation over to Mr. Jason Simmons to talk about the financing options for Colorado local governments.
May I ask the Chair, because I have a couple of very specific clarifying questions on what you just presented. Can I ask him while he's still at the DIES or?
Well, I think he'll be back.
Yeah, I will, I will be back up.
Presentation and then last.
Jason, are you available?
Yes, I am. Good afternoon, Elliot. And I'm not sure if I can control the slides from as being a presenter or if somebody's going to need to do that for me.
I can do it for you. No problem. Just let me know.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Good afternoon. This is Jason Simmons with Hilltop Securities, the city's municipal advisor. We just put together a couple of slides here this afternoon to kind of talk through some of the financing options available to Colorado local governments. As we've discussed with staff, there are a couple of options that could go with a sales tax extension. And some of that kind of will revolve around potential ballot question language as well, of which Dalton Kelly from Butler Snow is here to discuss after my part is done. So if we can go to the next slide. Really, when we're looking at projecting project needs and financing capital, really, there's kind of two main ways. You know, Colorado municipalities look at it as one is a pay as you go basis from annual cash flow or available cash balances that you might have, you know, for example, in the extension of the sales tax would produce annual revenues. You know, in the two and a half million ranges Elliot was talking about, that could be used annually to pay for some capital needs. Also, as Elliot talked about, construction inflation has gone up significantly over the last few years. The projects are a lot more expensive than they used to be, making it difficult to fund sizable projects on a pay as you go basis without having to save up significantly over time. Most Colorado municipalities are looking at a handful of financing tools when they're looking at capital projects. One would be general obligation bonds primarily backed by property taxes. Two would be sales tax revenue bonds. Three would be utility revenue bonds. And the last would be certificates of participation or leases. And the type of financing mechanism that you're really looking at really kind of depends on the type of project, existing available financial resources, and then also just kind of overall timing of the project as well. Next slide, please. So when we're kind of, when we're helping our clients really start looking at your one main question, which is do you have existing revenues available to support payments and any kind of financing that you might be looking at entertaining? If the answer is yes, you can go down a couple of routes. You could issue certificates of participation. Or you could go to the voters and ask for some type of voter authorized debt. Certificates of participation are a lease transaction, similar to how you might finance a copier. This is on a much bigger scale. COPs do require leased property. They are a leased asset kind of financing. And because they are subject to annual appropriation, they do not require voter authorization. They're payable from any legally available revenues of that municipality on an annual appropriation basis. If you do have revenues, you could go to voters and just ask for debt authorization. Depending on that type of revenue, you could ask for different types of bonds. One could just be a sales tax revenue bond. The other could be geo bonds or some kind of a general fund revenue bond, which could be a mixture of available revenues. If you don't have available revenues to use towards lease payments and/or debt payments, then really you're looking at a couple of things. One is, is a ballot measure for a tax increase. And/or you could issue, go to the ballot for a tax increase and debt authorization. And Dalton Kelly, again, from Butler Snow is here to get into that in a little bit more detail. Some questions can be done, can include both a debt and a tax increase question. Some need to be broken out, kind of depending on what you're looking at doing at that point in time. Again, if you're going to the ballot, you can issue sales tax revenue bonds, geo bonds or property tax, and again, review some kind of a limited tax, general fund revenue bond. Next slide, please. So this gets a little bit more detail into the different financing mechanisms. General obligation bonds are secured by the full faith and credit of the issuer issued for general governmental projects. These are repaid typically from property tax revenues from a dedicated mill levy. They do require voter authorization and for a tax increase, and it can be done in one question. Most Colorado municipalities do not issue general obligation bonds. Most of the clients that we work with that issue general obligation bonds are Colorado school districts or other special districts, I would say, fire protection districts, parks and rec districts. Most municipalities we work with tend to issue more sales tax revenue bonds or COPs. Revenue bonds from a general government perspective can take different forms, again, have to be issued for general governmental projects for tax exempt status. Can be paid from new or renewed special taxes or fees could be again, a general sales tax, could be a limited sales tax. We have clients who are increased just specific sales taxes for our parks and rec, and therefore those are the only revenues pledged. Or it could be a broader pledge of sales tax. Could also include other types of taxes such as lodgers taxes or other taxes or fees collected by those municipalities. These do require voter authorization for either the new tax or the tax extension, again, and for that debt authorization. Revenue bonds from enterprise utilities, not going to talk about those, those aren't really relevant here. We're just putting those out there. Again, from, that is a tool that municipalities have to issue enterprise type of projects. COPs, again, as I mentioned before, are a lease purchase agreement with an issuer owned asset subject to the leased property. That issuer makes lease payments, which are to serve as the payments on that financial obligation. Again, these are not, there's no revenue pledged, if you will, to the payment of a COP. It is generally any legally available resources of that issuer subject to an annual appropriation pledge. And again, that is why they are not considered multiple fiscal or obligations under Tabor. For, again, as I said before, most of our clients, we do, you issue a lot of COPs for a lot of our clients, for a wide variety of projects. Anything from, we just done, done some recently for a municipal court for one of our front range clients. We've done things for street improvements where we've used other assets as the leased property. So COPs are a very common financing mechanism for Colorado municipalities. Outside of water, wastewater, we probably do more COPs on any given year. And Elliot, if we can go to the final slide, please, this one has a lot, has a lot of information on it. A little more detail, not really going in much more if new information from what we've discussed before. But again, COPs, let's just talk about from a credit rating perspective, general obligation bonds, if you kind of look at the far left, unlimited tax, general or far right, excuse me, general obligation bonds tend to have the highest rating of an issuer, again, backed by that full faith and credit and that dedicated property tax. The highest rating would translate into the lower overall interest cost. Options three and four, as we're moving to the left, sales tax pledge, either a narrow pledge or a broad pledge. A narrow pledge, as we said before, can just be a portion of your overall sales tax. Or it could be a broader pledge to have a little bit more debt service coverage in there. A broader pledge is going to have a little bit higher rating and a little bit lower interest rate. And when we're talking about that perspective, we're really not talking about significant differences in interest rates from that perspective. You might be talking 10 to 15 basis points or a point one or a point one. You might be talking ten to fifteen basis points or a point one or point one five, really even between uh, you know, a limited sales tax or a broader sales tax. A general fund revenue bond is a good option. Again, does require voter authorization because a general fund revenue bond could just be you're increasing a port small portion of sales tax, but you're you're pledging a broader um bucket of of revenues, if you will. Um, we've had a few clients issue these. You do need voter authorization, but you could ask for a small, limited mill levy increase uh from a small property tax. You could include revenues from the sales tax or other fees. So a general fund revenue is a little bit more broad uh of of a package of revenues that could be used from that perspective. But again, it does require voter authorization um because it would be a multiple fiscal year obligation different from a C O P where you have those leased properties. The C O P ratings um are similar, probably a notch down from the the general obligation bond. One to two notches kind of depending on what that leased property is. Um, they do have a probably your highest interest rate that you're looking at from that perspective, again, not significantly higher. I would say from a point two five to a point three five higher than a general obligation bond. Again, depending on the nature of the project um is what we're looking at from that perspective. Uh, I'm gonna stop there and just see if there are any questions. Again, we we just wanted to kind of provide an overview of the different financing mechanisms that Colorado municipalities have. And we've had various discussions with city staff about these as you're looking at the reauthorization of that two thousand and five sales tax.
Thank you for that presentation.
Hang on one second. Let me make sure Elliot's done with the presentation and we'll go to.
He just asked for questions.
And yes, but I told.
Okay.
We're the end of wait until the end.
Uh, yeah, Jason, if you don't mind, we'll hold questions till the end. We do have Dalton Kelly on the line uh or from Butler Snow to talk about the uh ballot language. Um, so Dalton, this is the current ballot language and let me know when you're ready to change the slide. We'll make it a move for you.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much and um happy to get to talk to you today about the current ballot language and then uh what some ballot language could look like if you choose to run a question to authorize some debt and to extend the current tax. And so what's on the slide before you um is the sales tax that uh we're considering uh or that you'd be considering extending. Um, the sales tax was originally approved in two thousand and five and it authorized a one half of one percent sales and use tax. Um, half of that sales and use tax is um designated to finance um the preservation, acquisition and maintenance of natural lands. And there are some specific type of projects listed in there at the time. And the other half of that sales tax increase um is to use uh to be used to finance capital improvements um of the city. And there are some stiff specific projects at the time that are listed in the ballot question. Right now, that ballot uh that sales tax increase is set to expire on December thirty first, twenty twenty six. And so under Tabor, um you can vote the extension of an expiring tax. And so one of your options with this tax is to vote that extension either for a limited uh period of time as designated in the new question or indefinitely. Um, we'll go ahead and flip to the the next slide, which would be what the proposed uh new language would look like, something along these lines. Um, and so the beginning of this question would be a debt authorization to be able to finance um the construction and equipping of a new city hall and new police facility. And so that says, you know, shall debt be increased um without imposing any new tax or increasing any tax rate? Because we would be just extending the expiring tax as part of this question. But shall uh City of Durango debt be increased? And that would be your principal amount, what you would need to issue with repayment costs of and it's really up to uh this number and and Jason and his team will work um with the city on determining those numbers. If you decide to go forward with a debt question in order to finance the cost of constructing the new city hall and police facility and then paying the costs associated with that. The line after that that starts after the semi call in is really the extension of the expiring tax that um was on the slide above this. And and right now it's set up to extend that tax. And so you'll see it's the same percentage that was approved by voters in two thousand and five. Um, and continue to collect that um after two thousand and twenty six, when it expires and ending. And this is where you would set an end date if you wanted to have a a new sunset date. Or you don't have to put a date there. It's not required. Um, and then it would be to be used for the following purposes. And so it's the same purposes that were approved in two thousand and five. And so it's that preservation, acquisition and maintenance of natural lands and then also financing capital improvements. And we do make clear in this question as part of financing, capital improvements of the city that you may um you're authorized to pledge this revenue towards the debt authorized by this question. Um, this following line uh after the bullet points, the indentation um does give some some flexibility to the city. Um, as Jason highlighted, there's a couple different types of obligations that are available to you such as, you know, kind of a limited revenue bond, whether you just wanted to use um that fifty percent of this um one half cent or yeah, one half percent sales tax. Uh, if you just wanted to pledge that small piece, you could limit it to that. But with this line uh right here, essentially what amounts to, you know, the second big paragraph after the indentations is um the specific terms of the debt to be determined by the city as you determine to be in the best interest of the city. And you can pledge to that debt any legally available revenue of the city. So what this would go from is you could do a very specific um debt pledge of just the sales tax that was extended here and just the portion that's available for capital improvements. Or you could do um as Jason highlighted, up to a general fund revenue bond, which would be any available revenue in your general fund. Um, you could pledge to that debt and that um would have some coverage um impacts and potentially some interest rate and rating impacts that Jason could go into. But right now this is set up to give you the discretion when the time comes to issue debt to determine whether you want to do a very specific pledge um when it's time to issue the debt or if you want to do something that amounts to more of a a general fund uh revenue bond. Uh, the remainder of the question here is really just um a lot of boxes checked for the type of debt that you are able to issue. So you can have early repayment with premium not to exceed three percent. You can uh do some refunding debt. Um, however, you can't exceed the maximum repayment cost in this question uh question. And then the last bit to allow you to the investment earnings and the bond proceeds to be collected and spent without regard to any of Tabor's spending limits. Um, I'll pause there because I know that's uh a lot to unpack and I I think there might be one more slide if not. Um, I, yeah, there's one more slide which I think we'll cover and then um we can take questions.
Uh, yep. Uh, thank you. Uh, in the last slide here that we have is the potential next steps and ballot timeline. Um, so as was brought up earlier, staff has planned on bringing this back to council and having more conversations about this and and more detailed input. Um, starting June fourth and June eighteenth, um and staff has also outlined the timeline that we need to if we do want to go for reauthorization, um all the minimum uh dates that we need to make to do that. And all the different public input timelines uh here as well. So again, starting June fourth and June eighteenth, once we have a little bit more time to work with the numbers, um we'll have a little bit more clear uh idea of how the financing will work. Um, and then we can start to work in July uh to make sure that we get everything that we need over to the county clerk for the election. Um, and that will go through and the election process uh will go through October and along the way, there will be many points of input. That concludes our presentation. Thank you very much. Uh, and now we can take some questions.
Excellent. Thank you so much for the presentation. Uh, council questions.
Okay. Okay, so my question is, when he was presenting all the forms of finance, if you could just pinpoint the two that are really relevant? Because the rest of that stuff just sounded like blur, blah, blah, blah. And that would simplify the process.
Sure. Um, so what we are looking at is on this slide that uh potentially the top two general obligation bond or revenue bond. Um, again, we don't want to limit our options right now, though, and this is an informational meeting. There we could go any direction. Um, except for potentially the revenue bonds, as this is an enterprise based. Um, but those those two options are what we're looking at. Uh, the two thousand and five sales tax is a special revenue. Uh, one of those limited use funds, um and that would be under the revenue bonds, that second option, yeah.
I'll uh ask a couple of uh specific questions to the second presenter. I I didn't pick up his name, sorry.
Uh, yeah, Jason Simmons.
Jason. Um, on the, as a follow up to council, he has this question. What are typical interest rates currently ballpark for the options that we're looking at? The general obligation bonds and the revenue bonds?
Um, good afternoon. Uh, you know, you, right now, you're probably in that four to four twenty five range is is probably a realistic outlook today. Um, you know, they the, I think there's a lot of rhetoric out there that interest rates are significantly higher than they they are. But when you're looking at his interest rates from historical terms, while we are up significantly from where we were from historic lows uh in twenty twenty one, we're we're kind of on the higher end of um kind of the median averages over time. So, you know, if you're borrowing for twenty five or thirty years in that four twenty five range, that's pretty realistic and that's not too out of line with what historical averages are have been.
Okay, and what is the, what is currently the prime rate? Just?
From the prime rate?
Yeah, just to have a comparison a little bit.
Uh, I don't know. If you can give me a second, I don't know the prime rate off the top of my head. Um.
Well, I'll ask my next question. That's.
Go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, no, it's okay.
Oh, the prime rate is eight and a half.
Eight and a half.
According by the Wall Street Journal.
Okay. So that's quite a discount. Um. The question for you is if you go to your um presentation part where you show the financial number, there you go. That's the one. So the um the cash flow is three, two point nine million and that's based. So we, that is that the full quarter percent?
Uh, I'm sorry, is that the full what?
So the two thousand and five clat cash flow forecast of two point nine, is that the full one quarter cent of the?
Yeah, uh, so just for clarification, uh a quarter cent does go to parks, open space and trails and a quarter cent does go to uh facility capital improvement projects. And this is a quarter cent. Yes. So it's it's a half of the tax, a quarter cent. A little confusing.
And then the next question would be if if this is a quarter cent for that allocation. The that initial allocation of the ballot language had multiple uses, one of them being the library. And it's only the library that is being paid off next year. Is that correct or is about to be paid off the loan?
Yeah.
Hi, good afternoon, Devon Schmidt, Chief Financial Officer. Yes, the library is. Um, so Florida Road still does have additional time on um that payment.
Okay, and then the transfer annually to the library part of the bond, the loan we have. From my quick check, it is about one point one million. Is that about right?
I would have to, I don't have that figure in front of me. I'd have to look.
Okay, well, I looked. I think it was about one point one eight million. But I could be wrong, but it's it's definitely a lot less than the full amount. Another use for that same quarter uh cent is um so it was the library and the roads and sidewalks and associated improvements for safety. So in your model, you're allocating the full quarter cent to potentially the city hall, which means you're taking away money from the paying off in Florida Road plus road sidewalk safety uh allocation used with this, which was part of the ballot language. I pulled it out of the ballot language. So would those financial requirements no longer get funded based on this little model where we say there's a difference of nine hundred thousand?
With the road and sidewalks, um that tax was put in place prior to the two thousand and nineteen street sales tax, which does address um those particulars.
Now, the the ballot language that you see is in the presentation, the ballot language for the two thousand and five shows that it's for library and roads, sidewalks and associated improvements to increase driver pedestrian cyclist safety. So.
Correct, which was in place prior because this is the two thousand and five. This was in place prior to the two thousand and fifteen sales tax, which covers multimodal as well as parks and recreation. And then the two thousand and nineteen sales tax, which covers any street improvement projects.
So this ballot language is no more, no longer valid then? This two thousand, I'm maybe I'm missing points here.
It it's certainly still valid. Um, I would say that um with what we have for Florida Road and the library, those two particular projects have utilized this funding. We have also um utilized road impact fee funds to pay for Florida Road. Um, but what I'm saying is that later on, the community decided to pass the two thousand and fifteen sales tax for parks and recreation as well as multimodal and the two thousand and nineteen streets tax. Are you asking about what's on the proposed ballot language?
No, I'm basically, the way I see it is we have a ballot language that allocated the money for two thousand and five sales tax for specific uses. And that use is still the same according to the ballot language. There is no cancellation or change to that ballot language. This is the first time we rediscuss this ballot language. And of that amount that we are collecting, the two point nine million, uh one point one million, I assume, correct me if I'm wrong, when when you have a chance. But even if it's a little bit more, it that only that portion becomes available because it's a a debt part that is being paid off. So I see a difference of a required payment for only the city city services, city hall. We required says three point nine million. And if we leave everything else the same and take the money that the library has available, which is one point one million, we are a lot more short unless we take away money from users that we typically use this sales tax.
Well, I think if we looked at the proposed ballot language um that we received from the bond council, it is talking about capital improvement projects. Um, and so that would be that utilization. Um, also this would continue through two thousand and twenty six. Um, and we would need to come back with you to you for dates as far as when this uh authorization would then change.
Yeah, so I I guess we're speaking a little different topic here. Hopefully, my point was made. And then the whole presentation, the majority is about financing the new city hall. Um, and I'm just curious if we know of other uh high capital demanding projects. Uh, will we see a a a summary of all the high capital intensive projects that we are facing as a community? And I can just, without saying what or how, but I, you know, Durango Mesa is one, La Posta Road is one. Uh, the road and connections, you can talk about Three Springs or the Smart one sixty or Underpasses. There's two that we would have required. Uh, so there's a lot of childcare is another one. There's a lot of uses that are going to require financing. And is there going to be a presentation from staff that says these are all the capital intensive uses? And this is all the money that we need for all of those uses and this is what we propose? Or how will we get to something that has gone through that process?
And then if I may, and the city council retreat in two thousand and twenty three talked about all the uses in which we identified. What we're doing here is following the direction of the city council. So that's what we're in line with. If the council wants to change that direction, you can do so. But right now we're following the direction that was last given to us by the council. So that's what we are focusing on, which was if you go back to slide two. Pursue option A with renewal of a quarter cent, five sales tax for funding for post and quarter cent for facilities. So that's the direction we're following. If that needs to be changed and the council as a body can change it, but right now that is the direction that was given to staff and that's why we presented this presentation.
Yeah, and maybe my perspective is there is no decision and there was limited discussion. So you can say one can, one could argue that we never had that discussion. And that's why I'm like trying to understand at what point will we have a public session where we can actually have a discussion and make a decision to move in a certain direction? So that that's and that's a little bit that aspect. I had the last question because the uh, well, potentially the last question. The the renovation of the budget that you, the budget estimate you got for the renovation of the city hall is eighty three million. Then you said there were some things that were optional. So the actual project cost is seventy two million, correct? Yeah. How does that compare? And this is just purely for my understanding or to make it easier for me. to make it easier for me to explain to other people in our community. How does that cost compare to, for example, demolishing this building and building a new city hall? Or the cost of demolishing the police department and reconstructing a state of the art police department building across the street? What what order of magnitude are we looking at compared comparatively?
So Elliot, just switch back to this other slide. You can see that some of these projects were funded based off of new builds. And so we are reflecting those items on there. And I believe that's the city of El Centuro, California, town of Windsor and Basalt.
I don't mean those. I mean, this building and the police department building in Durango, these two. How does that compare?
So so that's why we did this research is to make a comparable of what the renovation costs are compared to potential new build. Before we spent all the money on complete design and that sort of thing for tearing this down and tearing P D down. We thought it would be more cost effective to look at the the cost per square foot of of comparable projects. And and doing that research, that's where we found that renovation costs are about fifty percent less than the cost of a new build, which is analogous to tearing these buildings down and and rebuilding.
Yeah, I just, based on this table, I have no idea what it would cost for this bill.
How many, how many, how many square feet is the current P D? Fifteen thousand times fifteen hundred. All right. And then how many square feet is this facility? Ish? So seventeen thousand times fifteen hundred. That kind of gives you a rough ballpark, right?
So that's two hundred and twenty.
For half, for less than half of the size, which is.
For 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 like a third of the square feet that we're getting over over there across the street. So I'm just trying to give you that information. You know, that's the right questions and you can get the answers now.
It's about forty million dollars to renovate or to demolish these two smaller properties for like less than half of it. And we already know that the P D can't fit there. So I think.
I think what's worse, what I'm struggling with a little bit here with the questioning is that we have talked about this. We have talked about direction for over a year. We, since Sweetie's been on city council, have talked about the need for a new police department. You keep saying we're building a new city hall for seventy two million. We're building, building a city hall that is at capacity and is like people are working in the smallest little like offices and we're building a police department. We're building both. It's two facilities, not just one. And we have given direction over a year ago to go down this route. And now we're finally getting, and and you want to go backwards and be like, oh, let's talk about it again. Talk about kicking the can down the road. I mean, yes, do we want to talk about childcare? Sure. Do we want to talk about Durango Mesa Park? Yes, we, but we have a tax funding for Parks and Rec. And 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 we have funding for those things. We.
I'm asking staff.
I get what you're asking, but I.
You're arguing with me. I don't feel like arguing.
I'm sorry, you feel like it's arguing. Please go ahead. I'm I'm clarifying what you're saying. So the public knows that it's not that the city staff are coming with random seventy two million dollar estimates without any direction. There's been direction given and there's been a need for years and years and years and years. And another city councillor that's sitting in the audience can attest to that. So we're moving forward. I so appreciate you doing things like the breakdown of what the library and the rec center would cost in current construction costs, because I think that that is a huge, like, it's hard to wrap your head around seventy two million dollars. Yes, but construction is insane right now. Hopefully, and there is talk that costs could come down a bit in the next few year, in the next couple of years. And so there is, I I'm hopeful that, you know, if this passes, if we can go down this route, hopefully there can be a little bit of reprieve. But, you know, thank you for for those comparisons because I think that that is a big deal and I appreciate all your work in putting this together. Dave, did you have anything you wanted to ask or questions?
I do, actually.
I forgot Melissa. Melissa, come back.
I hate not being there. I really miss you guys. So, yeah, I would just, I do have a question and I agree with Mayor Buell that you know, we have had these conversations and I appreciate, I really appreciate staff bringing this forward. And I do think that as Mark reiterated, we will have time to further discuss this as an agenda item in a city council meeting where, when the public will also have the opportunity to comment. So that's going to be the time for further discussion on how we move forward, if we decide to move forward. So, but a question that I had and I wanted to ask staff is on the grant side of it, I did see that you had three million dollars just in there for grants. And I was, you know, I've been obviously working with the airport commission a lot and they seem to, my goodness, their grants are so amazing what they are able to do with our rehab there. I'm just wondering if, you know, why, why that's so low and if we might be able to, if there's any other opportunities to look at additional grant funding for for potential rehab. I mean, it is a historic building, all of that. I just wanted to ask that question.
Uh, yeah, on our initial model, we just wanted to be as conservative as possible. So maybe not as possible, but we we did want to present a conservative model and three million dollars looking at it as a historic building, both potential federal funding and Department of Local Affairs funding. We think that that's a reasonable, if not, if not conservative estimate for the number of grants, but obviously we are going to look into maximizing that as much as possible. And if we come in higher, that's, that's our intention.
And I know we have a quick turn, you know, if if this goes forward, I don't know if those grants could even come in after i- i- any action was taken, but it just seems like such a good opportunity to rehab a building in a historic part of our community with a historic, you know, presence. And so anyway, it was just a thought. And I think that would sure be helpful if we, if we're able to going forward. And thank you. Thanks again also for the presentation and for all the work and I look forward to further discussions where we can dive into this, you know, and also into the language and purposes and all of that at future city council meetings when this is on on the agenda.
Oh, yes. Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. Okay. So what I'm curious about is on the two thousand five cash flow forecast of what? Almost three million. And you indicated that it was at a a lower level projection for our sales tax. Is that based upon our current size in Durango or have you planned for maybe a little bit of growth? Because you've got development going on and so forth.
That's a great question. So when we do forecast, we use historic data and based on that historic data, we aren't necessarily planning on growth per se. We're just letting the data go with, yeah, maybe not let the data go, but we're just using the historic data that we have. And when we do those projections, we are, we are projecting an increase. And the way bond qualifications work, and I'm no bond qualification expert, but we have to do a point in time. At least that's what we're looking at right now. So we are looking at a one year projection. And this one was from twenty twenty five revenue. So we do anticipate it to grow from that two point nine five number. But again, a projection is always going to be wrong. We're just going, we're going to try and have it be as accurate as possible when we do those projections.
Excellent. Well, our hour is up. I appreciate the information and we look forward to next month for the next steps.
Absolutely. You know, and as as Elliot said, we got these Friday late afternoon. So we're still going to be working through them. We're going to pull our C I P team in. We'll absolutely look at what other grants were available. That estimate came from Tracy Reynolds on grants that he knew that had been given for historic buildings. So there's still plenty of time for us to take a look into it. And I think in June, as we come back to council, you'll have more of a definitive type of funding forecast that we can provide as an update to the council. And then probably do that and see if we can get some more direction.
Terrific. Thank you. All right. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.